I would like to call the order to Marion County Board of Education Monthly Business Meeting for Monday, June 9th at 5:30. We're going to start off with our... Mr. Chair, have public and everybody been notified? We do have a quorum established. I'm going to start off with invocation by Elder Reverend Brown, if you don't mind. You'll do invocation for us tonight.
Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day. We thank you for everyone in our school district, Father, who has completed this year and done a great job. We thank you for being with each board member throughout this year and guiding us in our decision-making. We ask that you continue to do this for us so that we can be the best board for this school district. Our teachers will be the best teachers and our students will learn all that they can learn and make us proud when they go to college and wherever they may go afterwards. We thank you for the parents who work with their children to teach them how to behave in school and to respect teachers. And Father God, we ask that as we get ready to go into the next school term, that you will prepare us to do everything you would have us to do to make the Marion County School District shine. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen and amen.
Amen. Again, I'd like to welcome everyone to our monthly meeting for June. A quorum has been established. The public has been aware. Next, we'll go down to the item number three. Thank you again Reverend Brown for doing our invocation. Consent items. The approval for the agenda for tonight for 6/9/2025. What is the pleasure of the board on that?
I'll move, manager.
I have a motion by Mr. Don Hill.
Sure.
I have a second by Reverend Brown. Any discussion? When no discussions, we'll take it to vote. All those in the papers say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ice carried and agenda for tonight will be approved. I'm going to do two of them together, one separately. The approval of the minutes for the special call meeting for 5/13/2025 and approval for minutes for the special call meeting on 5/27/2025. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I say move to accept the minutes from special call meeting 5/13/2025 and special call meeting 5/27/2025.
Thank you, Ms. Akerson. Do you all have a second?
Second.
I take a second for Ms. O'Grady White. Any discussion? When no discussion, we'll take it to vote. All those in the papers say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ice carried and approval of the minutes for the special call meeting on 5/13 and 5/27 has been approved. The next item on business, I did it separately because it has been revised in your packet. If you see it, it's just one statement, but it is in yellow. So we'll go with the approval of the minutes for the monthly meeting for May of 2025. What's the pleasure of the board? Okay, I have a proper motion by Reverend Brown.
Second.
I have a proper second by Mr. Don Hill. Any discussion? When no discussion, we'll take it to the vote. All those in the papers say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ice carried and the minutes were revised. 2025/2025 has been approved. Next, we'll go down to the next item, which is superintendent's report. I'll turn this part over to Dr. Candice Smith.
Madam Chair, board, at this time, we will ask our finance director, Ms. Angel Cooper, to come with our monthly report as well as second reading for our budget for the school year 2025.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. Dr. Smith?
Good evenings, good evening.
The May numbers are in your board packet for your review. General fund revenues were $41,248,726 and expenses were $39,486,356. Medicaid revenue through May was $277,356 and expenses were $218,964. Any questions on those numbers?
I'm Ms. Akerson. I have one question as it relates to revenues over. What's the expectation at the end of June for that? Is there any big...
We have a lot of stuff that gets... You have to adjust it to other accounts like the federal grants and all, so it's kind of hard to tell. But right now, without moving anything, we'll be adding to the fund balance.
Really? Okay. Thank you.
The next district governor to propose budget for the second reading. Our vision is educating, preparing, and inspiring tomorrow's citizens and leaders, and our mission is for our school district to prepare young people to achieve their future hopes, aspirations, and dreams. The local taxes has not changed since the first reading. The total for the local taxes is $10,273,830. The total local and transfers is $11,330,000. That includes in the indirect cost of $310,000 and then the tuition is the LPM program. State revenues, no change since first reading. You've got bus driver, $862,000. Fringe benefits retiree, $1,449,485. Aid to districts, $23,504,726. And the state reimbursement, $8,377,859. Next slide, we have the totals. So total general fund revenue for '25, '26 is the same as first reading, $45,544,400. And this is a 2% increase from '24, '25. Any questions on the revenues? It's just a graph showing you that state is 76% of our revenues, local taxes is 23, and other local is the 1%. That's like this line is income. Salary study and competitive edge adjustment phase three. These are all the same except for the custodians. During our workshop, we discussed going back and looking at that. The lowest salary schedules were increased base pay by 8%. This included instructional aides, bus aides, and secretary scales. This is the third year increasing instructional aides and bus aides at a minimum of 5%. We went back and increased custodians an additional percentage starting pay for $13 and head custodian starting pay at $14.50. All other scales were increased base pay by 2% to 3%. And the salary schedules, we adjusted the bachelor's teacher scale starting at 49.5. And I put down at the bottom because we were discussing the salary schedule. That is zero to five step and ours, all four, zero to four is 49.5. So if you... They will get the cost of living increase. So if in '25, '26, it moved to $51,000 for step four, then all of our zero to four will move to that $51,000 also. Well, that might help explain it. Teacher pay, what I just mentioned, 48.5 to the 49.5 is what we have. Bus driver state minimum schedule increased 2%. We increased it overall by three and we're above the state's minimum schedule. Admin and classified step increase. Health insurance, there's a 4.6% increase for employers, but not anything for the employees. State retirement increase of 1%. And teacher supply change stayed at 4%. Now, that's the same as the first reading. For the expenses, overall, the expenditures stay the same at $45,544,400. We were able to increase the salaries to $938,374, but the fringe went down some from our first rig, so it's $306,759. So that gives us a balanced budget at $45,544,400. And this just shows the different percentages for expenditures, and you can see that salaries and fringe account for 85% of our expenses. Any questions on any of that? We are asking for approval of the '25, '26 budget.
Is there any questions for Ms. Cooper? With no questions, she's requesting that we do our second reading and take action on the second reading. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman.
I have a proper by Mr. Don Hill. Do I have a second? If I can get a second, we can take it to discussion if we have any questions. Do I have a second by anyone? The second, maybe we could take it to the discussion, so... I have a proper motion by Mr. Don Hill to take the second reading and the action. Do I have a second? Do we need to table? So we'll table it for right now and then we'll go back to that if you don't mind. I need a second to keep going. Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move down to B, operations and facilities. I believe Dr. Bunch is going to do that for us.
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Jordan is not with us this evening, and as you're aware, Dr. Bunch will be taking on more of a role in the operations and facilities division. And so he will be presenting the information for this evening.
If Madam Chair or Dr. say, first, I'd like to look at the report. Should have your packet. Looks like this. There's some projects. I'll highlight a few of those when we move these. There's a broad set going on month of June, July. Repetitive maintenance, so classroom work, painting the carpet, cameras, textur system, bait systems, new carpet and banner rooms, cleaning floors and those type of things. See, bull is the thing. So you're considering cost as well. While you're looking at that, I do want to have one point that's going to be, I have digging back in our schools next year. Secret halls for sentenets. It's the system right here. Every staff member will have one of these next year in their schools and their locations. It says an opportunity for teachers that are probably instructors or anybody that's having issues, push a button. Notify the administrators that's an issue in particular part of the school. Push it a number of times. Also contacts 911 first responders if that occurs as well. So you'll be hearing more about this. This is paid through the safety grant. No calls to the district. You see the size of the fund there. Some there. It is paid through by the safety grant that our district applied for at the end. Wasn't reported, so this has been a big new project. We'll have training for ourselves with our principals, training for our teachers, for custodians, for assistants, everybody in an office for everybody. Assistant training on how to use this and where this is landing around the neck at the school, early in school day. If there's issues, push a button, keep some help. Okay. Any questions about the summer projects? Next out of business I'd like to share with you is the AD. Pass this out to you as well. ADs at the schools. You'll also see the calendar there when we post, the jobs are being posted, when the interviews are going to occur, and when we expect hires to be made, depending upon the quality of the candidate. Also, you can see the number of coaching positions we have across the five schools and number of student athletes that we currently have as well. See that we have, we've added 20 additional days for this person to work in the summer and added a $10,000 supplement for that person to have as well. We're not creating two new FTEs. This will be in addition to a salary person we have already or personally behind. So in addition to a salary person we have already, we're personally behind. Questions about new athletic position? The last thing I'll share with you in your package, you should see this. Very exciting process, and we're looking to involve, we're looking close, we're looking at this. Uh, when we send a meeting with you, we're listening to what you had to say, or what you had to say about adding a three or five-year plan. For the building of our schools, for the maintenance of our schools, having directions for our school systems. Uh, if they might have a conversation, who does this type of work? They're currently finishing, I think, three schools aboard counties right now, including schools, uh. Bridge County, like I said as well, on the website, a little bit of things, whether they have just a whole host of things they do. They provide services of engaging the school board, where they come in with community view, open view, over a series of meetings. Engage the community force as well, when we have community events in all parts of our community, not just Marion, but it being the Mullins area, Bridge area. Here's, but they'll go in and listen and talk to everyone, will actually look at all of our schools, uh, current schools and, uh, what they are. The shape they're in, give us ideas of how we can use those more effectively, then also provide for us after listening for our school board, the human book room, district staff in our community. Uh, help provide vision for new building instruction that needs to occur as well. I do like this company because they do provide all of those services, uh, and they have. Architects of all the different parts, things they'll help us through the process of going through events and those types of things, once we get to that point. Uh, they don't have to go out subbing those things out, they are efficient, have all of those areas in there. If you look at them, you'll see the different, um, staff members that will be assigned to Marion County, pictures are in there, buyers there. Uh, and we had a extensive meeting with them, um. Just a few weeks ago, and they said this to us, but you, we, you, I asked them for any actions tonight, just want you to review it. Take a look at it, you'll see some dates in there where they want to go to get started, uh, depending on the action persons, when those dates will be adjusted. They, that just lets you know that's how quickly they can start. I really encourage you to look at the packet, look at that website, uh, do your investigations. This is a mighty big step for us, as we embark upon the growth, the future, the next twenty, thirty, forty years for Marion County. As we look at our current buildings, our new builds, we talk about other, uh, athletic fields and things that we want to see new. And, uh, they provide for us very well-informed, but also very objective way of looking at helping our communities, uh, around Marion County, see. The possibilities that we can grow into, so that's all that I agree on. Any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Bunch? If no questions, thank you, Dr. Bunch. Next, we'll move down to C, human resources report by Ms. Stacy Willbanks.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Ruth Thay. Um, you've received Georgian personnel actions in your packet for review, but we are in questing executive session this evening.
Yes, ma'am. Any more questions from Ms. Willbanks? No questions, we'll see you in a second. We'll go down to D for our superintendent's update, I'll turn it to Dr. Candice Pathan.
Yes, at this time, I'll ask Mr. Michael Stone, who is CTE and Secretary Director, to come and present information to the board.
Evening, Madam Chair, and the board, Dr. Thay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Now, I'm going to give you an update on, uh, CTE, and, uh, at the end, I'll give you an update on secondary, on high school, uh, data for the school year. Uh, this school year, our twenty-four, twenty-five, the ACT had, uh, twenty-four, sixty-two completers. We had four students completed and received their machinist one certificate from Florence Johnson Technical College. One student completed and received their welding certificate, Florence Johnson Technical College. And six of our cosmetology students passed the South Carolina State Cosmetology Licensor Exam this school year. Uh, we had a robust year with opening new programs, we opened three new programs, um, CT programs during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. They were engineering, which took the place of CAD. We had health science, which took the place of sports medicine. And I also like to announce, we just got a partnership with, uh, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year with NUSC. To provide a CNA track pathway for our students upon high school graduation in our health science class. And the third, uh, program that we started was building construction. Be mindful that this dropped our completer numbers from the previous year by a little bit because we, three programs. Did not have second-year students enrolled, so they could not be completers, they are concentrators, but they will be completers next school year. Any questions? Next school year, happy to say, uh, you know, this time last year, I talked about a mindset shift. Talks about working with guidance counselors, talk about scheduling based off of IGP's and students' career pathways. And being intentional with student scheduling with their electives. Right now, we have, we have, uh, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year in the fall. We have currently have a hundred and eighty-nine students enrolled as first-year students. Um, and it's growing because guidance counselors are still placing students in our programs. This number then continue to increase due to guidance counselor CDF still enrolling students in our into CTE courses. This past year, our students earned over five hundred and thirty-four industry credentials or certifications during, uh, this past school year, that they'll be able to take forward. And move forward with their, with their, in their career and utilize those. We'll also be adding a business completer pathway at Marion High School this upcoming school year. But Marion High School has not had a business completer pathway. Mullins High School is already, already has a business completer pathway, but we'll be starting that next school year at Marion High School. Just giving out, uh, high school students, if we talk about career readiness, then we'll talk about, uh, college readiness as well. High school students are able to take, um, SAT, ACT prep courses that counts as a high school let to credit. Students are also able to practice SAT, ACT exams on Adventum as well as SC discus, those guidance counselors give students password to SC discus. They're, they take practice exams. Little bit about the ACT SAT prep classes, split into two, it's one semester course, two nine-week courses. Half the class is split to English, and the other half is split to, uh, math. And then at the end of nine weeks, they swap, and the same teachers teach the English, the teachers the math, has two different sets of students. Any questions? Looking at enrollment comparisons, um, the ACT for first-year students back in twenty-one, twenty-two. There were fifty-two first-year students, twenty-two, twenty-three. I was able to get there, and, uh, sixty-eight students, we grew. Then twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, eighty-six students. This past school year, we had a hundred and thirty-six first-year students, and next school, school year, we have eight hundred and eighty-nine plus. The numbers above do not include early college or the Marion County School of Nursing students, so strictly CT students. Those also include students that go to take machine tooling, as well as students to go to the continuum in Lake City, take welding HVAC IMT. Next school year, we have seven first-year students that'll be going to Lake City for welding. They'll be attending the Lake City, the continuum, Lake City. In the fall of, uh, twenty-five, and we'll also have three welding and one HVAC student completing their certificate. With Florence Johnson Technical College in the spring of twenty-twenty-six. Questions?
Yes, ma'am. I, I love the idea of growth. What is, I mean, do you have a strategic plan for that growth? How many are you anticipating each year? What?
We took it over at least eight percent each year.
Eight percent, okay, that's what I've seen, thank you.
And we'll, we'll see that it's eight percent. There's a graph for you to show the enrollment growth, um, from twenty-two, from twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, and now twenty-five, twenty-six. And once again, it's not just enrolling students into CT programs, this is based off student sides of ease and career interests, and scheduling them towards a career pathway. Any questions about the growth? All right, now, let's talk about, any questions about CTE, we'll switch gears to secondary into the high schools piece. All right. So I think Dr. Holken presented some preliminary, some eye-ready data. Um, couple of board meetings together, was that right, though? With EOC projections, well, we have real EOC data now, these are real scores, this is real data. This is what's going to be on state report card, uh, coming in October. So the fall twenty-four high school EOC data, Marion High School, as you can see, had eighty-point-three percent that made C or higher on English two. Seventeen percent that made C or higher on Algebra one, sixty-one point two percent C or higher on Biology one. And twenty-three percent made C or higher on US history. Mullins High School, sixty-three point five percent C or higher in English two, fifty-three point eight percent C or higher on Algebra one. Twenty-six percent C or higher on Biology one, and sixty-five point two percent C or higher on US history.
Mr. Stone, Madam Chair, do you have, um, the data relative to what it was prior?
Yes, ma'am, I'll get, I have the report card, well, to what it was.
Do you have percentages with you?
Not percentages, just the point, yes, ma'am. But I will say, these are, um, a lot, these scores from the previous school years at both high schools. Man, uh, spring twenty-five, English two was seventy point four percent C or higher. Algebra one, we did not have any students test because they all tested in the fall. At Marion High School for Algebra one, Biology one was thirty-six percent C or better, and twenty percent C or better for US history. English two for Mullins High School, sixty-four percent C or better, fifty-seven point three for Algebra one, fifty-four point four for Biology one, and fifty-four percent US history. Now, how this relates to the school report card. As you can see, academic achievement, that is English two and Algebra one combined. And so with the total points, there's thirty points available. Last school year, man, I, uh, Marion High only received six point zero one points out of thirty, based on the EOC scores. For academic achievement, this year, they were receiving twelve point five four points. Preparing, that's for English two and Algebra one. Preparing students for success is Biology one and US history. Last school year, they received one point three oh points, this year, they'll receive two point eight seven. School climate, you see the question marks with that and the HSSS, which is high school success rate. The school climate data will not come out until the report cards come out in October. High school success rates, we'll have that data later on this summer. Guidance counselors are busy, busy right now, finalizing transcripts, finalizing grades, getting transcripts out of colleges for students. Once that slows down, we'll then have that HS, high school success rate, which is how many students passed from ninth, tenth, tenth to eleventh, well, grade. Um, so preparing success, two point eight seven, graduation rate, uh, fourteen point five eight, last year was fourteen point four six out of twenty-four points. College and career readiness is twelve point two four, which went down a little bit, which to twelve point nine three from the previous year. Out of nineteen points, which is a total of forty-two point two-three points right now. And as you'll see the note, both high schools have up to seventeen points remaining that have not been allocated in the total calculations. So let's look at Marion High School, forty-two point two-three, and where it takes them, puts them right now, without those two other categories on the school report card house rated. So as you can see, high school from the far right, thirty-nine point five to fifty point four nine is below average, so right now, that's where they are. But I feel very, very, very confident that they will end up in the average range. Once those, the school climate points come out, and the high school success rate points come out, so I feel very confident. That Marion High School will be average on the school report card, uh, this school year. Mullins High School academic achievement, once again, it's Algebra one and, uh, English two, thirteen point nine seven points is what, uh, they received based on the EOC scores. Last year, they earned six point three oh points. Preparing students for success, Biology one in US history, last year, they were one point seven nine out of ten. This year, they'll be at four point three nine points. Again, school climate, question mark, high school success, uh, is, uh, question mark. Graduation rate is seventeen point three six, last year was sixteen point zero. And college career readiness, fourteen point nine one points out of eleven, and out of nineteen, up from eleven point two two last school year. Right now, without those two sections, school climates and high school success rate, Mullins High School is at fifty point six three. If you look at the chart here, fifty point five is average to fifty-nine point four nine. I feel very, very confident that they'll receive at least seven point five points. And be good, classified as good on the overall state report card next, uh, team that comes out. So a lot of growth, a lot of hard work. I'd like to thank Dr. Ruth Thay for her decisive leadership, and then being intentional, and focused, and driven, and support that she's given us, and allowed us to be able to do our jobs. Um, but the high school principals did all the credit on this, they did a great job, teachers, administrators, guidance counselors, teachers at both high schools. Um, there was very decisive, intentional leadership, uh, this school year, which we anticipate will continue, uh, with next year. And look for more growth next school year, and if you would like me to get those, have the EOC calculations from the percentages from last year, I would have to get those.
Get that fit to them, so they can have compared to.
Right, but the report card, you know, the, the calculations will speak volumes, the percentages, but the report card project, projected numbers. Uh, shows you the amount of growth that took place in both high schools this year on the enforcement terms. Very pleased, not satisfied, but very pleased, uh, from where we are, from where we were last year, to where we are going to be when the report card comes out this year. And it's something that we can all be proud of. To have an average high school and a good high school. And any, any questions for CTE, ACT, high school?
And some of the CTE data will be in your, um, requested information in the executive session.
Thank you. No, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Ruth Thay, for your leadership and your reset button, and to your staff, and all the students and everybody that made that possible happen, so appreciate that.
Want to thank our, um, director secondary, as well as our high school principals, and the teachers who have worked extremely hard. Um, and being intentional in what they're doing each day in the classroom, so that we're seeing the results of, um, of our students and their efforts, so thank you.
Thank you.
I do, before you move, um, it goes along with CTE, just wanted to give a brief update, um, probably about first semester. I've talked about an aviation program, we're in conversation with the Marion County, um, airport, for a multi-district partnership, and so Dr. Bunch has an update on that.
So we are going to be applying for a aeronautical aviation grant to, uh, pay for this program that puts, you know, uh, all kinds of, uh, equipment. And updates for our room and those kind of things, it'll be submitted this week. It's a very unique program to have, it's one of just a few in the state, uh, Pickens County, Ori County, maybe another or two. So we, very, very few people have this type of program in the state, very excited about this, but what makes us truly unique is we are a, uh, working with three. With us, with three school districts, us dealing three and dealing four, working together, sending students now from those two districts into Marion County. Be a part of this program, once it gets up and running. So once this, it's a program gets, uh, the grant gets approved with the will, uh, then we will be buying the equipment, updating the room, and the room will be located at the, uh. Adult education ACT area, if you know where the machine tool building in room is directly across, very large room, I think we're going to completely remodel. And turn into the aviation program, so we're very excited about this. We're expecting this grant to be between one hundred fifteen, two hundred thousand dollars. And the only recurring pulse that I know that we're working on right now, this will be the FTE, but that will be shared between the three school districts. So we're very excited about that, but most of the equipment and some of the repairs will be taken care of through this plan. Very excited about this, it's an opportunity to have a program for our young men and our young women from all of our areas to be a part of a very growing industry. As you know, there's a lot going on in our airport here in Marion County. None of those monies will be a part of this, it's totally separate, but it's going to complement growth with Marion County and what we see the possibilities will be in the next seventy, fifteen years. You think about a student coming up with either pilot license or partial pilot license, but also learning about the repairs, the motors, or design, those kinds of things. So just like we're teaching repair on automotive, we'll be teaching at some point repair on all aviation airplanes and motors and engines that are tied with those things. Very, very excited, so I'll keep you updated as we go along, we expect, but even this week, then we're here in the next couple of weeks if we win the, any questions? Again, it's just, you saw the three new programs last year, we hope this will be our next new programs. We continue to reinvent and reimagine what our ACT program can truly do for citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like for our leaders for the district, Kansas Rose, please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Bethay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. If I may, first address the policy JLCG, Seizure Safe Schools. This is a policy that has been written to meet the requirements of South Carolina House Bill thirty-three oh nine. You have that in fact. This is the Seizure Safe Schools Act. This takes effect July first, twenty twenty five. Are there any questions about the policy? The bill states that everything here with the seizure training program, the seizure action plans, and the seizure policy being in place, beginning July first, twenty twenty five. The JLCD policy assisting students with medications has been revised, and those areas that were revised or added, what kind of in that policy that reflects the House Bill for the Seizure Safe Schools Act, those revisions had to be made to meet those requirements. And the third one is the administrative rule of JLCD dash R, which is, I'm sorry, that was the assisting students with medications, the JLCD dash R. The JLCD assisting students with medications for the use of life-saving medication. Again, those changes that were made in the verbiage of that policy reflects, again, changes that had to be made based on the House Bill thirty-three oh nine. Are there any questions?
We have no questions, Ms. Grubbs is requesting that we do action on the reading of the first readings on policy JLCD, AR, JLCDR, and JLCG procedures in school safety. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Reverend Brown, and second by Mr. Kevin Dozier, any discussion? We have no discussion, we'll take it to vote all those in favor of the first reading of all three policies. Please state.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes carried, and the first reading for all three policies has been approved.
Madam Chair, at this time, I will ask for Ms. Suzanne Ellington to come forward to share information regarding the Healthcare Foundation. When we initially joined the Healthcare Foundation with a partnership, Ms. Will Banks oversaw this particular program, and I know at that time she did give an update to the board on the process and procedures that we will be using. But now that we have truly activated the grants, we just want to provide an update. We also have available, if we have board members that are interested in seeing the actual names of the teachers and the amounts in their projects, we do have that information to share as well.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. So I'll go over how we go about the finance check and in order, you know, everybody to apply for the grant. It begins with, they send in, we send out a flyer and give everybody a heads up, and the grants due. So they go in and they submit their grant, and when it comes to us, I make sure that all the grants are completed. And then after that, there is a grant committee that will be, that we have that scores the grant. They will read through the grant, we use a rubber, and they go through and score the grant. And I also pass out names, you know, locations where they teach, you know, so it will be very fair and honest. So go over where they are. The notification, so within thirty days and after the grants have been scored, they will find out if they're, they've been approved or not. I send an email out, you know, to both, all recipients, and if it's been denied, you know, I'm more than welcome to go over the grant with them, so if they want to reach them yet the next time. So this might be some areas that you can improve, and we need more information. We also have an informational meeting. We come, like, this past time, since we came school year, we have informational meeting up here at the district office. We take their pictures with their check, and we go over important dates. You know, when money has been spent by, we go over purchasing requirements, and all that information is given to them. Then they have to turn any information to us, outcomes, measured data. They send photographs and just the more things for us, you know, to have to turn it to Marion County Healthcare Foundation.
I do want to add, the grant committee consists of internal and external stakeholders, they're not just district staff members. We have members of the chamber and county.
Both, to be very honest.
Right.
On the next slide, just a timeline, in the fall of twenty twenty-three, we received our first twenty-five thousand dollars from the Marion County Healthcare Foundation. In the spring of twenty twenty-four, so we received that money in December, it's in December twenty twenty-three. So we had the first round in the spring of twenty twenty-four, and seventeen grants were awarded, seventy-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. In the fall of twenty twenty-four, we received another one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And in the fall of twenty twenty-four, we had thirty-three grants awarded, ninety-four thousand eight hundred and eighty. And then the spring, this spring, twenty-two grants were awarded for seventy-nine thousand dollars. So the next grant will be in the fall, and that will be announced to everyone. Um, they've been listed through social media posting. Up here, I have several postings that we've had on social media. The first ones, we received the check from the Marion County Healthcare Foundation. I've got the file in spring recipients, they've been listed, it's also listed in the polls. So getting that out to the community, we let them know.
And also, can you share about the process that we do go before the Healthcare Foundation Board, that process?
That we bring each, we've been, we go, we do, we get their board meetings, and we, we sort of, you know, go over everything with them. We talk about, and where the money's being spent, you know, they have questions, we answer them, we have our, you know, all the information that they need, and they'd be very excited because they're like, yep, these teachers are so creative and innovative, you know, that they feel like if it had gone through them, they might not have, you know, been touching all the need for everybody. Everybody's so creative, and the projects have been very big, and they've been excited about, we'll go back and present them a house.
I know we received a half a mail from that check. Is all of that money being for the Healthcare Foundation going toward the grants?
I got the answer for you, Ms. Patricia. What happens is, because I requested information, they awarded us the grant, but we don't get the whole five hundred thousand dollars at one point in time, they give it to you in increments. Those are the, so you get, so this is the page right here, you get the one twenty-five, one twenty-five, and then they have to submit what they're going to use it for. So when they do submit it, that's where the pictures and everything is coming from in the grant process. But we didn't get a whole big check at one big time. So what they'll do is every year, we'll get the one twenty-five, and then they'll go through and give each teacher who applies for the grants, the money. So it's, everything is accounted before, all dots, eyes, and cross Ts. Yep. Gotcha.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, we would, when you're on the screens, you've just been busy. I want to thank our board members who are at full graduations, I think they went extremely well. Just a lot of excitement. I will say that I was looking forward to an outdoor graduation, even though it was hot, but I think that they went very well with the quick transition to indoors. And so I want to thank you all for your presence and support of our seniors in our high schools. In your packet, you also have, you know, Dr. Holken has shared this a couple of times, summer programs, but in your executive session packet, I also have some numbers that'll go along with these to show the number of students that are in these various programs. Just a few reminders, we will this week have our summer leadership retreat, which is our annual retreat with our administrators, and that one will be Wednesday and Thursday. We will also have new staff orientation, July seventeenth, and opening complication. Want to go ahead and give you that date in advance so that you can go ahead and schedule, and that will be tentatively at CD Jordan, and not at the park. At this time, I would like you to look at your action items in your packet. Student transfer requests, I do not have any for executive session, most of these are repeat requests at this time.
Looking at the student transfer request, what's the pleasure of the board?
Madam?
I got a, some move from Mr. Don Hill, second, second, second by Ms. Patricia Atkinson, any discussion? We have no discussion, we'll take it to vote, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes carried, student transfers has been approved. We'll move down to F, which there is no public participation. We're down now to G, which there is our, do we have any committee, committee updates for any of ours? Any committee updates? If none, we'll go to, the next one would be the food truck budget. And I believe that's for Mr. Weeks, I'll let you tell me what's going on with that.
Oh, you were, oh, I was, um, was talking about the culinary arts, with the, whatever they need for to get a truck to haul the food and stuff for what they need in their own, in their own capacity.
Okay, that's going to be a Dr. Bethay.
Right.
Week, Madam Chair, we are looking at securing, one time we talked about just doing a food truck, but I think there's now more an interest of having a truck and a trailer. For example, if the truck breaks down, we still have a trailer and you can replenish the truck. And so with that, we're looking at using some of our tokens, which are federal funds that come into CTE because it supports a program. And then if we need to come in as a district and then supplement whatever the balance, but that is something that we're working on.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one, I think we have one on this, is the athletic coaches reservations. I believe that's also Mr. Weeks' question, I think it was answered.
Yes, yes.
It's already answered.
Yeah, right.
Just, and the next one is our staff professional development.
I guess that was asked, when did she say they would do the training and stuff?
That's the training, okay, I'm sorry, I'm marking it off my list, I'm sorry. The next one, we'll go to Mr. Dozier for the Creek Bridge 5K program, you were requesting information.
Yeah, they gave me information on it, and told about cap size and the reason why. I think he explained it to me, but in the future, what's the largest we can put the kids up to the cap size?
Right now, we have a twenty-two ratio at Creek Bridge, and you can go up, in terms of state regulations, you can go up twenty-nine, thirty. But we try not to, because we know the lower the class numbers, the more effective the teachers are going to be when you're dealing with small number of students. But what we will do in terms of Creek Bridge, and we've done it before, we only have a very small number of students that have to be transported to AEL, but we have had some multi-age classes before, and that has seemed to work because it's such a low number, and when you look at multi-age classrooms, you look at the student data, and you have students that are some of your higher performing kindergarteners, and those are prime examples for children that can be in a multi-age classroom that may be with some students that may be in a different grade, helping them in this way.
Um, with that being said, the ones like the 5K to go to AEL, who report card do they be on, like, does it go, be that on Nicole or, or do it say AEL?
You don't start written, to report card data to third grad.
Yeah, I know, but it's just some kind of, I'm not saying it wrong, but I'll get back with you on that on a later date, but, um, I'll get back with you on it on a later date, but those kids, you said it's something about five or six, I'm right, low number?
It's four or five. I think they have not had over five, according to Dr. Owens. But are you talking about their regular grades?
Probably is, because I'm still on, you know, certain report cards and stuff, you know, especially at another school.
We'll, we'll talk, Mr. Dozier, because we want to make sure, you know, whatever questions you have, we will get those in. So because it's a good time to have that conversation while we're planning for next year, so to address whatever questions or concerns you have.
We're going to go down to the policy BEDB, that's the board agenda, the action, it has an action beside it. I might see Ms. Overita White.
Well, I think what the, the policy was a policy that we spoke about a while ago, it was brought up and we voted on it, and I kind of think I might need legal guidance on it. So we, I don't know if it can fall in there, but there's some questions based on whatever we did or did not get from the previous legal attorney. So I would like to take this into executive session.
Yes, ma'am, I'll take it. I'll add it to my list, okay? We'll go for that for executive session. Open, open complication, of course, the superintendent did announce it, and it's going to be at CD Jordan. We do have the next regular scheduled board meeting, July, it has to be determined only because this is where we are supposed to talk about these two meetings that was voted on and passed, and now it's time to decide when we're going to have it. But I will, because it's, I guess it's voted passed, can we talk about that in executive? Or we got to talk a lot of it right now for the two meetings?
I'm sorry, said it again.
Can we talk about it now, or do we have to take that conversation to executives?
You can discuss it now in terms of whether or not you want to. And again, I was not here when y'all made that decision about having it too many, but that's really a conversation you could have.
Right. Okay, so right now, we have voted that you want two meetings starting in July. What is going to be convenient, I know the second Tuesday is not good for one of the board members, and the third, Thursdays are not good for one of our board members. So we already had the third Tuesday for the first one we have already. For the second one to come into play, because that is something you all, and we all voted on, we have to discuss when we're going to have it. So this is our time of discussion. And that's something's changed and that I wasn't aware.
And Madam Chair, one thing I would add is, and again, I was not here, but if y'all's were talking about two meetings per month going forward, you could still do that, although I will say there are some districts that because of the Fourth of July, et cetera, even if they typically meet two times in a month, sometimes they will not have those two meetings in July. So that's something that you would have as often as well.
Okay. Also, no, I know that sometimes July, we, we typically skip the July meeting altogether. But I think that that was a problem that we shouldn't skip it anymore. So I do know we are gonna probably have a July meeting. But we do have to decide on going forward, the two meetings a month and where it needs to be after this, this week. So I'll, I'll leave that for a little bit to ponder and to think about, and we'll come back to that before the meeting is over. The next thing is our South Carolina Law Conference, which is in August. Everyone has been registered and hotels and everything, combinations has been done. Please get with Ms. Goss if anything should change because she had to do it on availability. So we've, we've been booked and, and so far it'll be August the twenty-third to twenty-four. The next agenda items will be due at a later date when we decide when the next agenda meeting is gonna be. We are gonna have executive session going out for three things. The first one is a personnel contractor matter. That's two of them. I have one actually that I've requested as well, so we'll take that. And then we're gonna discuss the policy B E D B for the board agenda. Other than that, I think that's the only thing that we're going out for executive session for. And for knowing that, what's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, some move we go to our second session.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks. Thank you. Proper subject by Ms. Overita White. And a discussion? With no discussion, before we do, I feel there is a discussion, I'm sorry. I want to say thank you again for the good projections on our report cards. I'm excited about that, our academics, that's what I sit for. So we'll go into our second session. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes carried, executive session it is. I get excited about good news for grades.
You need to pass the things.
The executive folders, do we need to put anything back in there and pass it or keep?
You didn't say you need the folders back.
Everything that was in there or just the?
No, just the folders, right? Because you already got what you need now.
Any confidential.
We are coming out of executive session. Well, there. What is the pleasure of the board? I'm sorry. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, Chair, so moved that we come out of second session back into open session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a proper motion about Mr. Dirk Weeks, a proper second by Mr. Kevin Dozier. Any discussion? If no discussion, we're taking to vote. All those favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes carried and we are out of executive session back into open session. I would do want to say that we took no action in executive session whatsoever. At this time, what is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair. I said move to accept the sick content's recommendation for June 9th, 2025 personnel actions, as well as the personnel actions addendum two and addendum three. With an exception to exclude from addendum two, A2A's request for release will be pending on appropriate documentation or until a suitable replacement is secured.
I have that motion by Ms. Patricia Akerson. My second. Second by Ms. Ophelia White. Any discussion? Well, no discussion, we're taking to the vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes carried and the personnel action has been approved. Is there any more? Few updates. We do have the next budget meeting. We're scheduling it trying for June the 23rd to 5:30. The next board meeting will be July the 15th. Um, the next board meeting will be July the fifteenth at five thirty. Uh, this.
July twenty. Oh, I was talking about the old.
July the twenty third is the next budget meeting and July the, June the twenty third.
June twenty thirty.
And then July the fifteenth is at um five thirty. That's our regular July meeting. We are going to table the two meetings, uh, what dates those are going to be until a motion is made again for that. Um, other than that, we think everything is done. And again, Dr. Butte, thank you so much for your staff, for all your leadership for this year and closing out and going to a new year. We can't wait to see the things that you have going on for our district and we appreciate who you are. I mean, if we can have a, what's the pleasure of the board at this time?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a proper motion by Miss Overeem White. Do I have a?
Second.
A second by Mrs. Dye Hill. Any discussion to leave? If no discussion, we'll take it to the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, but ayes carried and the meeting has been adjourned.